It's ten minutes after ten and we have eight members present. We need two for a quorum. We have Mr. Bernson, Mrs. Chick, Ms. Sikowski, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Savornich, Mrs. Walters. Eight members, we need two for a quorum. Sergeant, would you go remind some of those people that we need to in for a quorum? The council will come to order, please. I call the roll.
Bernson, Chick, Derek Galanter, Gober, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Kazik, Chekov, Padilla, Riley Thomas, Soren Shwax, Walters, Ferraro, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Yes, let me point out that this is the city meeting of the City Council for the City of Los Angeles on the 11th day of April, the year 2000. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel 35, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Savornich moves, Ms. Walters second. If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Items number one through fourteen on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have been held. Items one through three are ordinances.
Well, we'll hold those on a desk. We're expecting twelve. Are there any specials? One through fourteen? Any specials? If not...
Item seven, Mr. President.
Item seven is called special. Any others? Okay, prepare the roll on four through fourteen with the exception of seven. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Members of the council. Members of the council, we have visiting exchange students from our sister cities in Bordeaux, France, and in Mexico City. They're here to visit Los Angeles and study the Windward School in West Los Angeles for three weeks. We share a great friendship and goodwill with our sister cities of Bordeaux and Mexico City for many years. They're accompanied by Cheryl Smith from the mayor's office, and we wish them a very warm welcome. Would they please stand and be received by the council? Thirty-five members, I think. You have a great opportunity to not only meet with people from our country, but those from Mexico to meet with French, and those from France meet those in Mexico. So, we want to wish you a very pleasant stay in Los Angeles, and hope you go back to your countries with some knowledge that'll be helpful to you in the future. Thank you very much. Mrs. Chick, you have a presentation?
Colleagues, good morning. I wanted to take this occasion to formally introduce to all of you someone who's quite important to the well-being of the city of Los Angeles, our new county tax assessor, Rick Auerbach. As you probably know, our Los Angeles County assessor, our former assessor, Kenneth F. Han retired in February. The Board of Supervisors then conducted a wide search, interviewed more than forty candidates, and found the best choice, right here next to me, in the assessor's office, Assistant Assessor Rick Auerbach. He has nearly thirty years' experience in the LA County's Assessor's Office, so he brings great institutional memory and experience to this position. He's the co-author of LA County's State County Property Tax Administration Contract. This contract has been adopted as a role model for most of the other counties in California. So, he not only knows how the institution works, but he knows how to change it to make it work better. So, colleagues, I'd like to present to you our new Los Angeles County assessor. I purposely waited until after due date on property taxes. I know we've all paid ours. If not, you know, you can pass the check to the county assessor and expect your late penalty fee. But on behalf of the City Council, I wanted to give you this certificate in recognition of being selected to serve as LA County Tax Assessor, and it's Rich. And we've spelled his name wrong, so when we're done, you'll give it back to me, and we'll fix it. And a few words to my colleagues.
Thank you very much, Laura. Well, it's a pleasure to be here before you today. It's an honor to be selected as the twenty-fourth assessor in the county's one-hundred-and-fifty-year history. And I guess I really have one message for you all today, and that is to continue to work with you on issues that come before both of us. We've had a history of working together. Currently, we share a lot of information. One specific thing is our building permit data. We get information from you that's used for reassessment of property, and in turn, we provide you access to our files for code enforcement. One additional item that I understand was just approved by the council last Friday is an agreement to share our geographical information system, which we have both been working on for a number of years. That'll be a great benefit to not only other agencies within the county, but also to the Again, I would like to pledge that my office will be always available to you. I will be available to you, as well as my staff. My chief deputy, Gary Townsend, who most of you know, will also be working closely with me. And at any time, we will be there to share any concern that you have, and to work with you, to work on new ideas or suggestions that you may have to improve the way we do business. With that, I'd like to thank you again, Laura, for being here, and I pledge to work with all of you and hope to meet all of you in person in the near future and work together for the benefit of all the people within the county and the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. The last thing he forgot to say is share revenue with us. We know he's going to do that. Thank you very much, council.
Yeah, Rick, get that money over quickly. We need it.
Well, one of the things that we need to work on, and I think this is something that's close to your heart and ours, is we really have to regain control of the local property tax revenue that's generated from the county and city of Los Angeles. So, we need to work on lobbying in Sacramento, lobbying the governor, and our state delegation in the legislature. That's something we are already starting. We have a couple of bills up in the legislature that will help in that area, and I hope to work with you on that.
Yeah, and I can also say that the League of California Cities will work with you.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we have the ordinance is now one, two, three. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Items fifteen through thirty-nine on the regular agenda, ten votes is required for consideration.
What do you need ten votes to consider for?
Mr. Holden, he's asking to vote on these items in your absence.
Oh, okay. Does anybody in the audience wants to be heard on fifteen through thirty-eight? We have somebody who wants to be heard on thirty-nine, so we'll call that special.
And I think number thirty has to be held up for purposes of amendment. Number thirty?
Which, thirty?
Item thirty.
Thirty we'll call special, but no one wants to be heard on all the items except thirty-nine, so will the public hearing is closed. Any specials by council members besides thirty?
John, thirty-three and thirty-nine should be amended. So, thirty-three special.
Thirty-two. Any other specials? Any other specials? We have fifteen through thirty-eight with the exception of thirty-two and thirty-three and thirty. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes. Excuse me, thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
Item number seven called special by council member Hernandez.
Mr. Hernandez, item number seven.
Mr. President, Mr. Holden requested item seven special. I was just acting on his behalf in his absence.
Mr. Holden?
Yes, Mr. President, this is the contract which provides for general managers to issue up to $500,000 without board approval, and $150,000 for personal service contracts, including in the primar...
Rudy.
...ordinance. So, my concern is that the way you do it around here sometime when it was $50,000, then they'll issue a contract for $49,000, and then they'll issue another six months later to the same contractor for another $49,000, and the list goes on. Any safeguards in this ordinance which would say after the first $500,000, if you want to renew that contract, that you should bring it back to the board? So, the board at least be informed what the general manager's doing.
The recommendation on the agenda is that this item be received and filed because it's addressed in item three, actually.
And that's really, they moved on three, and I wanted three to... It's the same discussion that really should take place in three, you're correct.
The limit that's contained in three is actually $150,000, not $500,000. So, item seven should be received and filed.
Okay. And also in three, can they do $150,000 and $150,000, or at what point do they have to ask the board? I mean, there's no cap.
At any point where they exceed the $150,000 limitation, that's $150,000 limitation that can be imposed by the board for overall purposes as to one contract or for a series of contracts.
A series of contracts.
That would be for the board to direct the general manager.
Is that clearly understood in the ordinance?
It would be an action for the board to take, not in the ordinance. The ordinance simply allows the $150,000 limitation, which by the way, represents an increase from $100,000, which is the authority they now have.
So, the board can at any time just let them not take any action to put a cap, to establish a cap. Therefore, it would mean that the general manager could do $150,000 for six months, then another $150,000 for six months, and the list goes on without any...
What the ordinance does, it authorizes the board to delegate authority to the general manager. The board can impose that kind of limitation so that they can say a $150,000...
Should we make a recommendation that the board consider that as a factor?
That would be appropriate.
Well, then, I'd like to recommend that the board at least consider it as a factor.
That would be as part of the action on item three, however.
If they... Oh, we are not on three yet, but you have to ask for reconsideration for that purpose. But if the intent is to establish a cap, then that's what they ought to be considering at all times, that the cap is to be established. And if you're going to exceed the limit, then you should get permission from the board, I think. So, before you can even include that as amendment, you have to reconsider item three, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
I saw move that we reconsider item...
Okay, Mr. Holden is moving that we reconsider item number three, colleagues. Is there any objection to reconsideration of item number three?
No. 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 Nice.
We're going to receive and file on seven. Mr. Holden is requesting that reconsider item number three for the purposes of amending provision in number three that would include the general manager of the Department of Water and Power to be able to contract only up to a certain level. Am I correct, Mr. Ed Chavaria?
Correct. As I understand the recommendation, it would be a request to the Board of Water and Power Commissioners and the other proprietary boards that they limit the authority to $150,000 total per contract. Rather than the ability to do multiple $150,000 contracts with one contractor.
So, for the purposes of reconsideration, is there any objection to reconsidering item number three? Okay, seeing none, item number three is again before us. Mr. Holden, would you like to make a motion?
I moved that, man. That's explained by the city attorney.
Okay, Mr. Holden moves. Is there a second?
Does the city attorney second it?
Is there a second to Mr. Holden's motion?
Are you recommending it, the city attorney?
It would be appropriate to do it. I have no recommendation.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on item number three as amended by Mr. Holden? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on item number three as amended and tabulate the vote?
Fourteen ayes.
That item is approved.
Yeah, Mr. President, may we go forthwith on item eight, nine, ten, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine?
Without objection forthwith on those items as requested by Councilman Hernandez, Mr. Clerk, I believe it would be appropriate that we receive and file item number seven at this time. Is there any objection to receiving and filing item number seven? Seeing no objection, that'll be the order on item number seven. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
On item six and thirty-four B, please.
Forthwith on item number six and thirty-four B at the request of Ms. Galanter. That'll be the order.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item number thirty called special by council member Hernandez.
Yeah. Mr. Hernandez, item number... Mr. Hernandez, item number thirty?
The only reason I called item thirty special was to submit a substitute report that includes the CLA and the CAO's recommendations in regards to the item before us.
Mr. Hernandez, I see that that has been circulated. Colleagues, we do have a substitute item number thirty A on your desks. Is anyone that would like to speak on item number thirty or thirty A now that it has been amended? We have number thirty A, which has been circulated. Mr. Hernandez, would you like to just briefly?
Yeah, it's regarding the business assistance centers and the areas being covered. Basically, there was a lot of dialogue in committee, but the CLA and CAO's recommendations basically were part of a new report, and that wasn't reflected on the agenda, so we brought in the substitute motion, so that would be included.
Anyone else would like to speak on item number thirty? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, would you open the roll on number thirty A, which amends thirty? Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, that item is approved.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Forthwith on that item, next item? Item number thirty-two called special by Councilmember Missakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to see if someone's here, Mr. Karsh, to present this. It's basically recommending that we oppose an effort introduced by Senator Alarcon, which would require Caltrans to adopt new noise regulation enforcement measures for the Van Nuys Airport. And inasmuch as we have been struggling with Van Nuys Airport and noise ordinance questions ourselves in terms of what we can do or not do vis-à-vis the FAA, it struck me that before we just opposed something here, we ought to know more about it, and in fact, it may be something that our constituency would be supporting. I do know that members of our constituency did go before Caltrans recently and oppose an issuance of a variance for noise under the State Department of Transportation at Van Nuys. But it seems to me there's an interesting interrelationship between noise regulation that is not controlled by FAA, that may be able to be controlled by Caltrans, and I would like to know more about the bill before we are just assuming that opposition is the stand that the city should take.
Yes, we will. My name is Michael Karsh with the CLA's office. We have our analysts for the matter, Christine Hollis and Mark Adams from Los Angeles Airport Department, to go into detail. Basically, what we're really concerned with is that the measure only applies to Van Nuys Airport. And for your information, the bill is set for a hearing in Senate Transportation Committee on the 25th of this month. So, I'll turn it over now to Ms. Hollis and to Mr. Adams.
Yes, I would add that it's the county that actually is responsible under state law to enforce the state noise regulations. The county actually has not received any requests for extra enforcement from anyone near Van Nuys. And our recommendation to oppose is based on the fact that this would create separate enforcement for one airport different from enforcement for the other airports that have permits from the state.
Well, inasmuch as you've just said that the county is arguably responsible for enforcing noise in this area and yet has not received any complaints, I think it's probably because no one knows that they can complain to the county about it, and I think where we do let our communities know that some of the noise issues that they've been taking up only with the airport, they can relate to the county, would help bring an extra force of that governmental agency to the awareness of the problem to help figure something out. It may be that Van Nuys is the only airport that is being suggested in this one, but Van Nuys is one of the only remaining airports that takes some of the particular kind of noisy stage-two-heavy aircraft that come in. Santa Monica Airport, which was regulated by the state, disallowed them. Similarly, Burbank. So, now Van Nuys is the only general aviation airport in this area, in an urban infill area, which does accept them. So, I don't believe, I do not believe that the analysis of just opposing this only for the basis that it only applies to Van Nuys makes sense, since we have all been struggling to come up with something for Van Nuys and been thwarted in part by FAA or not having clear guidelines as to what we can do. So, I am hesitant at this point to take the stand of opposing this, and I would believe, as Mr. Holden often tells us, that as things go through, there are different times and there are different levels of committee hearings where we can get more information or amend it if possible. But I would ask that we continue this for a week to learn more and figure out, both through the state senator's office as well as the county, what their role on this might be so that we can utilize just another effective entity to help deal with significant noise.
Mr. Fuhr?
I want to join with Ms. Missakowski in urging a continuance of this, but frankly, less because I think there's more information. I think that Ms. Missakowski has well stated the point that one of the most important quality of life issues that this council has been dealing with has been noise related to this airport. It's been exceptionally controversial. We call, we had a meeting in Van Nuys next to the airport, and hundreds of people came to a standing-room-only council meeting to address the issue of Van Nuys Airport noise. And whether there are elements of this proposed statute that should be changed to some degree is one thing, but I think the spirit motivating our former colleagues' introduction of this measure was real frustration over the absence of sufficient noise protections at this airport. I recall, one of the first things I tried to introduce as a city council member was a motion that would require tougher enforcement of noise here, only to learn early on, thus beyond our jurisdiction as a council, that it's only from the airport commission that such rules could emanate, not from us. And as a consequence, I do so, it may well be we end up supporting this, or at least some of us vote to support this measure, rather than to have the city council be on record opposing it. At a minimum, we have to continue this, but I think it's going to be a bad idea for us to oppose this legislation. And Cindy has it exactly right. Some of the language in the report isn't, I don't think, accurate. So what if it's treated differently from other airports in the state? This is among the most significant noise, quality-of-life problems of any airport that I'm aware of. And secondly, the next sentence is, "No evidence exists indicate that Van Nuys Airport should be treated differently from other airports." Well, the fact is, it's in the middle of a heavily populated area that has generated enormous numbers of complaints about this airport. Is it true of other airports in the state? I don't know. But it's certainly true of Van Nuys. So, I think Cindy has it right. I would second the motion to continue it for a week, and I'm very disinclined to think that we're going to move to oppose this later on.
Yes.
Mark Adams from the Department of Airports. I'd just like to point out that this is an amendment to just the state airport noise regulations, which is a fairly limited regulation that would just, and the amendment would just apply to Van Nuys. Secondly, this, we can divorce this, we can separate this issue to some extent from the non-addition rule, which will be up for council next week, I recall. This is an issue that the airports is concerned about, the potential costs specifically related to Van Nuys, and we'd like to, you know, as we've recommended to the CLA's office, that we would have the.
Costs related to what?
The costs are related to the mechanism for enforcement that is set up specifically for Van Nuys by this regulation.
Perhaps we should ask to amend it to enable the state to provide us with the funding to actually enforce the tougher rule, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't have the rule.
Well, wait, hold on one second. We have two more people who want to speak, and I heard, I believe I heard somebody suggest that this needed to be continued. All right, Mr. Burnson is next.
Well, if this is going to be continued, I probably don't need to speak, but I do need to know exactly how this is going to impact our airport and the businesses that surround the airport and the community that surrounds the airport. So, if I had to vote on this today, I'd probably vote no, but maybe I can be convinced if somebody can show me the benefits of it. But, you know, there's a lot of, you know, sometimes we rush into things and we don't realize what the impact is going to be down the road. Now, you know, the airport may create noise, and airports do create noise, but they also create jobs, business, economy for the area, and this is a very important part of the valley's economy. And before I rush into voting on something that may impact it, I want to know all the details.
Yet another reason to continue it. Mr. Holden?
Madam Chair and members of the council, not specified in the language of the bill is factored known as SB 90 disclaimer, which means when the state imposes certain conditions, regulations on local government, then the state is required by their own position, which is law, to reimburse local government for that additional expense that would be necessary to implement these new regulations and guidelines, which means that the county would have a claim against the state and certainly have an interest in this legislation. That's just one of the major factors which was not explained in the digest here. The other things that I've looked at, you are superseded by federal law if the plane is in flight and at the same time generating this kind of a noise level. Clearly, you may or may not have the noise level, grind level, coming in, but the feds then preempt you. It's really kind of ambiguous here, all these languages and all these laws and what the requirements are and who would have the last word. So, in order to satisfy Ms. Missakowski and Mr. Fuhr, putting it over for a week and then coming up with strong language, which shows that this bill is good for the community or won't work and cost more, we need to at least have them know what the facts are. And so, I have no problem putting it over for a week, and Mr. Karsh, we'll get right on it. We read the bill, we give them the bill to read, and then we tell them what the law is and why it can't work.
All right. There being nobody else who has asked to speak, are we ready now to continue this for one week, right? All right, this will be continued to next Tuesday.
That's April 18th.
April 18th. I'm sure you can, but not right this minute. No, no, I know. Okay, next item.
Item number thirty-three called special by Councilmember Fuhr.
Mr. Fuhr?
Madam President, that there are members of the public who wish to speak on the item first, so there may be some confusion about the speakers' cards, but I know that they wish to speak.
Okay, I have a card here for item thirty-nine.
No, there are two members who wish to speak on thirty-three. Are those cards submitted? I think, Alex, let's get them to the president, please.
Okay, let's get those, and then.
And then I'll speak after they.
All right, and next time you have to push the button so I could run the timer on you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did.
All right, we have two people who wish to be heard, one of whom I haven't seen for 20 years. This is now item thirty-three. I don't know which order you put these in, but Cheryl Roden, you're up first.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Cheryl Roden. I'm the Director of Public Affairs for the Writers Guild of America, and my colleague is Doreen Braverman, General Counsel for the Guild. We are here this morning to speak in favor of this item. As some of you may be aware, there has been a long history of discussion and debate over how the city's business tax should be applied to writers and other artists. We've been in months of negotiations with the city now and discussions, and those have brought forth today what you have before you, which we feel is a bill, AB 83, at the state level that will answer many of the questions and concerns that we've had now over the last few years, and it's been built out based on the standards for employees at the state level and the federal level. We think it's a very strong and good piece and positive piece of legislation, and we urge you to support it.
Thank you. We want to thank.
Wait, wait, Doreen Braverman? That's you, right? Go ahead.
Sorry, thank you. We want to thank Councilman Fuhr and Controller Rick Tuttle and the Legislative Analyst Office, Ronald Deaton and his staff for all of the hard work over these last three to four months. We found a great deal of common ground. I think from the Writers Guild standpoint, we had some misperceptions about the city's intent to apply its business tax to our members. We've received assurances from the city that there's no intent to intrude upon the creative content, no intent to intrude upon anyone's ability to protect their intellectual property while it's being developed. We can assuage our members' fears that there would be theft of material and that the city has no intent to tax employee activities, and that was very meaningful to us, and we've now been working on a separate understanding with the city on the implementation of AB 83 in 1992, and we're working in a very positive fashion, and there's been a great deal of progress. And we're very much confident, we're very confident, that the city's application of its business tax to people in the creative community who contribute so much to the economy of the city would not interfere with business, with employment activities, bona fide employment activities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That closes the public hearing, and we'll hear first from Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, we've had a real breakthrough here, and although this issue might seem esoteric, it actually affects all of us in a very positive way, given the direction we're now heading as a team. There have been numerous attempts over the past several years to get state law to enable the franchise tax board to provide to the city of Los Angeles information as to who pays taxes at the state level. Why is that important? Because we know that when it comes to business tax, as much as 40% of our businesses aren't paying. It's profoundly unfair, because it means the SFOF laws are requiring the people who actually comply with the law to subsidize them. It means we have millions of dollars less every year for basic city services, including services to be provided to the very businesses who aren't currently paying tax. We've had this legislation, which is now called 1992, in Sacramento for several years running, and it's been vetoed or defeated year after year. Among the key ingredients in that has been opposition to it from parties, including from the writers. There was a lack of clarity around an array of issues. There's this bill, AB 83, which is before us to discuss at this moment on this matter, that would have, last year, had a much more draconian impact on the city's ability to collect its taxes. We had this logjam, wasn't helping anybody. This year, we have a real breakthrough, and I want to thank very, very strongly the representatives from the Screen Writers Guild who have spoken with us today, as well as the CLA's office and the city clerk's office and the CAO's office and the controller's office. It's been a remarkable effort to come together on this, and the business community has been very assertively at the tables when we were hashing out the details of this language that enable us to break through the logjam. It ultimately was a team, including business leaders, who forged the language necessary to make this happen. So, we have to act as the committee has recommended. I urge us to unanimously endorse the committee's recommendation on AB 83, because the amendments are in place about which there is common ground, and that bill has been joined with AB 1992, which would enable us to get the tax information we need. It's a win from everyone's standpoint, and I really want to congratulate everybody for coming to this moment. Maybe this year, finally, we'll have the revenue we need, and the writers won't feel an unfair cloud over their work.
Mrs. Chek?
I predominantly want to second what our colleague just said and to thank him, because I know you led the way, along with our talented city staff, to achieve this. I remember, colleagues, when we made the step to join the modern era and with our zoning ordinances to legalize home-based businesses, and that step, in its original form, caused problems for creative artists, musicians, et cetera. We made changes to that ordinance to disallow the interference with privacy and the protection of intellectual property, but there were still problems remaining in terms of how we define a business. And clearly, writers, screenwriters, TV writers, were very much swept up in our business tax code, despite the fact that many of them, if the studios dealt with them differently, would be viewed as employees rather than as businesses. So, with this carefully crafted new bill, we've put something forward that makes very good sense, that's fair, that's based on a rationale that makes sense, and that's fair to everyone. And I've called the next item special, and I will save my comments on the next bill, but these two are going forward together. I think it's very important that we stay a team and end up finding ways to collect what's owed the city. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yeah, I'm not sure they do go together, so I just want to say that upfront, and I wasn't part of the, I guess, negotiations that went on to create this agreement. And I wasn't part of the, I guess, negotiations that went on to create this agreement. I just wanted to ask, from the perspective of the city clerk, the proposed amendments before us and the definitions of employees, and I agree with the concept, does that mean that these current people who are being asked to be exempt, their employers take out business ta, I mean, employment taxes on their behalf when they compensate them?
Yes. Mike Carey, the city clerk. What the new language in AB 83 really recognizes is that, under both state and federal law, using common law principles, and I'm going to say this, regardless of what your employment contract might say with the employer versus the employee, if the issue of control exists, then both the state and the federal government will find that you are in fact an employee and require you to start, take the employer to pay unemployment insurance...
So when I issue a personal contract on behalf of the City of L.A. to a consultant to do work for me, I am no longer, I am their employer?
You may or may not be, depending on...
Right, and sometimes ask them to be very creative in trying to...
If that individual is responsible for the result, and you don't exercise any control over that individual other than asking for a result to occur, then that individual is an independent contractor. But we've had instances, in my office included, where we have had independent contractors that the controller and the state rule were in fact employees because I exercised a massive amount of control.
Okay, and I could see that. And my question is then, on that income that is generated by that employee, I pay taxes.
You would have to, yes.
And I pay business taxes. And so in this case, the employer pays the business tax, and that's why the employee shouldn't.
Correct.
And that's that definition.
Our business tax would not apply against income earned as an employee. Now, obviously, these individuals, or any individual, could have a mix of business income and employee income, and we would only tax the business income.
Okay.
Assuming it was truly business income.
Yeah, but, okay, so then there's a process to determine that. And when we get to item 39, I'm going to try and ask, what's the connection? Because I don't see a connection.
This item 33, that was refined somewhat in the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Does it please everybody now that we worked it over? If we do, I'll ask for an aye vote.
Unfortunately, Mr. Burnson wants to be heard first. Mr. Burnson.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure how you're going to define control. Now, for example, there are people that work for commissions. I know my wife is involved in an industry where she's paid by commission, and she has to pay the Social Security on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
Now, will this, this will impact that type of employment? Right now, right now, a lot of employers are getting around paying their half of the Social Security...
Correct.
Retirement and other state requirements, disability and so forth.
A lot of employers are calling people independent contractors...
That's right.
Who are in fact not independent contractors.
Now, what will happen? Will that impact them?
Let's assume you come to me first, and I make a decision that you in fact are not a business, you're an employee, and I'm going to write a letter to the Employment Development Department.
Okay, now, this is only, this will only affect as the city taxes are concerned, or will this affect federal taxes?
It should affect both federal and state taxes, because all three agencies really should come down on the same side, employee versus independent contractor. And if, to use your example...
So in other words, if there's a continuum of activity...
Correct.
You would consider that to be an employer. If it's a, if the person has a separate business with a business license, and they do a contract with you to do one particular thing, then that in fact would be separate.
With no control if you're just responsible for the result, but if the employer or the principal exercises control over how the thing is done and accomplished and the hours you work, then you're probably unemployed.
What about the regular, excuse me, regularity of it? I mean, there may, there are people who are, who don't necessarily keep any regular hours, but who, whose all, all their activities are centered in one office, and they are considered by the employer as independent contractors.
One of the factors you look at under the 20 common law factors that the IRS uses is, is this part of the regular trade or business of that?
Now, let me ask the bottom line question. Who's going to enforce this and make these decisions?
We will enforce it relative to the business tax. The Employment Development Department of the State of California will enforce it relative to uninsured and state income taxes, and the IRS will enforce it relative to federal income taxes.
They will. This will be a joint...
Yes, they have done this. They've investigated, I know they're out here now in the movie industry looking at these issues.
Okay, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Okay, open the roll on item 33. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, and we have, what the records show, that we have Mr. Fuhr and Mr. Holden on the same side. Okay, next item, please.
Item number 39 called special by Councilmember Chik.
Mrs. Chik. Yes, colleagues, we've already had some preliminary discussion about this bill. It was originally introduced by Assemblyman Wally Knox, I believe, last year, and was not successful in passing. This is extremely important legislation for our city, and extremely important that we get it passed this time as it's introduced by Assemblyman Sadio, excuse me. And what the motion before you says is not only should we support it, but we have enormous support from the business community. Yesterday, I was up in Sacramento with Mike Carey and Michael Karsh before the Tax and Revenue Committee, and we had a representative from the L.A. Chamber speaking on behalf of the Chamber, the Central City Association, the Business Tax Advisory Committee. The first question that the Republican Vice Chair of that committee asked me in my testimony was what we were going to use the revenue for. The motion before you says that a top, the top priority for use of this money is to move towards business tax reform, and there is a report coming to the Ad Hoc Committee that talks about such things as the need for the city clerk's office to completely renovate our computer system so that we can more accurately collect what's owed us. The state Franchise Tax Board shares this information with Mexico, with other states, and yet somehow doesn't share it with its own cities. It doesn't make sense. And we have businesses that are obeying the law, that are paying their taxes responsibly, and are carrying the share on their shoulders for, as Mr. Fuhr said, SFOF laws that are really breaking the law in ignoring the legitimate and responsible payment of business taxes. The motion before you does not preclude this money being used for other causes and other needs, and we know we have many in the city, but it does say that the top priority use should be to further business tax reform. We have our businesses at our side helping us to pass this, and this is a strong and important message we need to send to them. I thank you for your support.
Mr. Fuhr.
Thank you, Madam President. We, I clearly are all on the same page when it comes to the importance of the passage of AB 1992. And again, it is going to move in lockstep with AB 83, and we'll be working together with all the players we've mentioned to assure that we succeed on this. The next question is, what do we do with any revenue we receive from this? And obviously, the revenue is not going to be available for a while because the legislation hasn't even passed, let alone the taxes pursuant to it collected. But when the day comes that that revenue is available, we do need to get a handle on how to allocate it. Now, this motion of Ms. Chik's is going to go to committee. It's not, the vote today is not to actually enact these policies, but to send it to committee for the purpose of further deliberation. I am among those who would like to see some portion of the money that is added to our general fund because of 1992 allocated to business tax reform. Beyond that, what percentage, how much, and so forth, that remains to be seen, and there are lots of demands on the public fisc right now, and it's only going to get more complicated, not less, when the money's actually available to us. But certainly, some percentage of it should go to business tax reform, and we'll be discussing that in more depth in committee in the near future.
Thank you. I am reminded that we did have a member of the public who wants to address us on this item, so if Angela McGann from Central City Association, you said, there you are. It's your turn.
Good morning. I'm Angela McGann, Legislative Analyst for the Central City Association, and I'm here to do two things, to express our support for AB 1992, CCA supports this legislation, and also to support Councilmember Chik's motion. As all of you know, this information will go to great lengths to assist cities in tracking businesses that are not paying local taxes, and it's a crucial component of efforts to reform the business tax system. We also want to ensure that the most amount of flexibility is preserved for the revenues resulting from the passage of AB 1992. Business community has waited a long time for business tax relief, and we're working hard to make the Assembly bill a reality, and we have our work cut out for us. As Councilmember Chik has stated, this has failed at least once, and most likely, I think, twice before. We'll have to convince the Republican members of the Assembly and the Senate that the business community will indeed see the benefits from this and would like to work with the city and to have assurances from the city that first and foremost, the business community will reap the benefits the business tax reform will offer. And once again, we support Mrs. Chik's motion.
Thank you. That closes the public hearing, and Mr. Holden is the next speaker.
I thought I heard Mr. Fuhr say this is going to go to committee?
Yes.
Yes, that's what he said.
Okay, well, fine. I would suggest it go to two committees, IGR, which deals with one aspect of the bill, because it's compounded a bill proposal, and the other part should go to the Finance Committee.
Does that have to be a business tax reform as well as...
Yeah, well, wherever, wherever else it should go, because you're establishing a policy in a Rule 16, at least attempted to do that, and that should not be the case. As to whether or not we should support or oppose AB 1992, that should go to policy, IGR, and then we'll deal with that post haste.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Members of the council, as I stated, this has nothing to do with item 33. And why we're discussing them together makes no sense to me.
Well, because they were called special, but we're actually discussing them separately.
Right, but people talk about them being related, and they're not related. One of the things that's real bothersome to me is the public policy statements this council would be making in regards to this motion. And I know that it's going to committee, but I have some real problems with it. And, you know, we might be playing a weird game, or we might be trying to do something, but the real problems I have is the state of the city. As I see it today, we're reaching an atmosphere of pre-1992. When you look at the percentage of the general fund that's going to police, to fire, the realities of the gap between the haves and the have-nots, and then we have the audacity to make statements like this in an economy that definitely is benefiting certain sectors and hurting others. I think as a city, we have to start making a statement because the people are feeling the difference. And as long as we continue to earmark monies, and we're not earmarking them in the direction of housing, we're not earmarking them in the direction of parks and libraries, what we're doing is basically supporting statements that don't reflect the quality of life in Los Angeles. And it might be the Republican Assembly and Senate who believes that we have to cater to the needs of business, but I'm concerned about catering to the needs of the quality of life of the people who live in this environment. And that's why I have a problem with the statements that the motion is proposing and earmarking money directly for tax reform. So I just want to make my statements upfront because when it comes out of committee, I'm going to get to vote on it. And I know that there's a lot of issues I've had to deal with in terms of the human service delivery system, in terms of the housing stock, in terms of our educational system, and I'm just questioning these priorities at this time.
Okay, that seems to complete our list of speakers. So as I understand it, the council has agreed that this item should go to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee and to the Ad Hoc Committee on Business Tax Reform.
Correct.
Anybody else? Okay, those two committees will have the next word on this item. And that brings us to the next item. I believe Mr. Burnson had a motion to reconsider.
Madam President, members of the council, I'm going to ask for reconsideration of item number one on the taxi cab rates for the purpose, not of amending the rates, but of amending the ordinance that governs the Taxi Cab Commission. Currently, it takes 12 votes for the council to overrule the Taxi Commission. And I would, if we, if we agree to reconsider, I'm going to ask that be changed to a two-thirds majority, the same as any other commission. And the city attorney has asked that if we do this, to ask for a one-day continuance so it could be brought back tomorrow with the proper code sections, they would do that. I'm told that they need to do that, Nate.
Okay.
So I would ask for reconsideration of item one. It's time that we put this commission in the same perspective as other commissions in relationship to the council's authority.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to reconsider. Mr. Savornich, is this on reconsideration or on... No, okay. All right, open the roll on reconsideration of item one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, the item is once again before us. Mr. Savornich.
I would just, I'll let the chairman of the committee make the motion.
Okay, then would you hit the button so I... Okay, go.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, and I'd like to thank Mr. Burnson for bringing this to our attention at this time. Colleagues, I think this is a step in the right direction. One of the things that we saw as we were trying to bring the taxi refranchise ordinance from the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners to the Transportation Committee of this council, to the floor of the City Council, was the ongoing frustration that anything that the Board of Taxi Commissioners did, we needed to garner 12 votes on this council floor in order to change something that the Taxi Commission did, or we had to concur, or send it back to the commission. And so one of the things that I saw even before the new charter goes into effect on July 1st was how trying to reach a supermajority in regards to just changing one provision that the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners had done prior to it coming to this council was often at times an exercise in frustration. I would suggest that bringing this into compliance, as Mr. Burnson has stated, with the other boards that we have in the city to have a two-thirds majority is much simpler and I believe would serve this city better than having a supermajority when it comes to dealing with issues involving the Board of Transportation, the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners. And so I second Mr. Burnson's motion, and I believe that this would be a step in the right direction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I'm going to ask that if we approve that, I think appropriate for the council to take an action on whether we approve that amendment, and then ask that we continue it one day at the city attorney's request so that she can draft the proper sections of the code that need to be amended. So that would be my motion first to approve it, and then to the change, and then to continue for one day.
Okay. Ms. Holden?
Can I just say one thing? What, I, I would be happy to look into that and get some language for you. It appears, however, that what you have in front of you today is merely a charter implementation draft ordinance, which is amending the Los Angeles municipal code and putting into it what previously was in the charter and now is not going to be there anymore, or was going to be in the ad code and now is not there anymore, and so we're amending the municipal code. So it may be that there's another section, it may be that the ad code has to be amended rather than the muni code when we do that, and we can...
Now, is that what you're going to find out when we continue it for one day?
That's what I'm going to...
Okay.
Whatever needs to be amended, include it when you come back tomorrow, please.
Okay, all right. Mr. Holden.
I think the other day I saw it said administrative code that says that you cannot, you have to approve or deny the recommendation of the Transportation Commissioners. You need three-fourths votes to do that. That's what it was. This is not complicated at all. Number one, I think the city attorney understands the intent of this body referred to as legislative intent. Therefore, all that's required... Therefore, all that's required is to have it in the second reading, in the first reading, the language as relates to whatever code, and we don't have to continue it for a day. So I understand what Mr. Burnson is saying, responding to what the city attorney's already said, but I think legislative intent prevails. And so therefore, I don't know why we have to continue it for a day at all.
Okay. But I think the answer to that is...
What are you saying, Mr. [inaudible]?
Well, yeah, I think the answer to that is the city attorney would like to check on this.
I would like to make sure that the council has in front of it the right section of the code, whether it's the ad code, which I believe it is, rather than the muni code, which the muni code is what is before them today, and we will have to amend the ordinance and bring it back, which we will do, and we will do quickly for the council.
Right, you're adding a section, you're adding the admin code to this ordinance, that's to go along with the municipal code.
So I would ask that...
So two sections.
Yes.
All right, so the motion before us is to, we have reconsidered, is to...
And I only charge $35 an hour.
That's right. But it wasn't your motion, it's Mr. Burnson and Mr. Savornich's motion to... Oh, okay, but it was Mr. Holden's idea. There you go. I smell a conspiracy in the works. All right, so we're amending the motion before... Oops, Mrs. Chick.
I'm sorry. I would like, this is coming back tomorrow?
Well, as soon as we vote to do that, yes. Okay, so I would really like to have Mr. Etcheverria here to explain the rationale for why it was done this way, and presented to the Ad Hoc Charter Committee.
Because we were not asked, and the Charter didn't address the fact that in the ad code, which is separate, the, you have the, all we're doing is doing the Charter implementation, and that doesn't address the two-thirds, three-quarter vote. This is something else and something separate that Mr. Burnson and the committee, Mr. Savornich, Mr. Holden are all asking that this be added into this particular ordinance.
So that we deal with this commission on this issue the same as we do with all commissions?
Right. That's my understanding for the rationale.
So it was an oversight?
Okay.
So it was... Okay, let's try it again. The motion before us is to make the amendment and continue the item for one day in order to get the city attorney's refinements. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Unanimous vote, that is approved. You are certainly welcome. All right, next item.
Now's the time for public comment on non-agenda items.
We do not seem to have any cards. If there is anybody who wishes to submit one, do it quick. Otherwise, the, we have one. See? All right, this is the time for comments from members of the public. Wendy Trice, if I'm reading this right.
Just a second. I have my, I had my notes written down from the Greyhound. I don't know if I can find them. Here they are. I'm having problems in, my name is Wendy Trice, and I'm having problems in the city with having, this morning I had a problem cashing a check at 4972 West Pico. The woman refused to cast my check, and I don't know why. I've had problems at a lot of places around the city of Los Angeles, and, I mean, I know I'm, I know that this is a joke, but I'm going to keep going anyway, and I'm a nervous wreck because I haven't taken my respiratol this morning. I want to find out why I'm having so many problems in Los Angeles with going to work, and I've submitted something to the city attorney's office, I've submitted all the, some of the places that I've been at trying to go to work, I've submitted that to his office. I'm hoping that they've gotten delivered and that some answer will come to me in regards to what happened, what's going on, but I'm just trying to figure out what's going on. I've left the state of California. I've even been to Paris, I've been to Heathrow Airport, I've been to the United Kingdom, and I've had quite a few problems in Europe. I can't understand why that's going on. I'm sure we are not still dealing with Darryl Gates. I hope not. When I go to my hometown, which is in St. Louis, that's what they're dealing with. They're dealing with the Nicole Brown Simpson case, and they're dealing with the police and Darryl Gates. So I can't even go to my hometown and have a peaceful day. Every police officer, everywhere I go, there's a problem. And I want to find, and the origin has to be here. It's either here or, I don't know where, it can't be Washington, DC, I've been there. So I want to find out what is the problem with the Los Angeles, I don't know if it's the council, the people of Los Angeles. If they have a problem, what I suggest that they do, if they haven't done it already, is have a community drive, put my name on there, tell everything that I've done, and then submit it to the council, and so that I can find out what it is that I've done that I can't even, I've been to Miami, let's go down the list, just right quickly. I've been to Washington, DC, and then the bus, the Greyhound, I've been hurt on the Greyhound ride, this, this happened recently. Someone struck me with a match, I haven't had a chance to go to the hospital, tried to set me on fire. I want to make something clear, I don't know, maybe this has something to do with it. I'm not a gay black woman. I'm not interested in any gay women. I'm not going to gay out, and that's not, you know, I don't know, maybe that, the intensity of what is going on is unbelievable. I don't smoke crack, I'm not a crack dealer, I'm not a drug dealer, I'm not any of those things. I'm a regular person like everybody else, and I'm not, trying to mind my own business. This has been going on since 1992, which I think it may go back even further than that, but I'm just finding out about it. I want the hatred towards me stopped. Whatever it is that's going on, I want it to stop. If you need to do what you need to do, then you need to do it, so that it can stop around the country, because it's certainly going on. I've been to Miami, it's the same thing down there. I've gone to Arizona, and my, that particular information about Arizona should be sitting in Clinton's, President Clinton's office, because I faxed everything to him that happened to me with a letter attached. If he doesn't have it, there's a thief in the White House, because I certainly sent it to him, and that was before I went on respiratol. So I'm asking that the people of the state of California just stop harassing me, because I don't know what the problem is. What is the problem, so that, I don't know what's going on. I don't know why you're hating me so much, I haven't done anything. And it's certainly happening in St. Louis, and I'm sure they'll be willing to verify. Call up a person named Steve Perrin, who works for KMO, K, I think it's KMOV. I was on a video there. I'm sure he would be happy to address the council about anything pertaining to me, if he knows anything.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. [inaudible].
Can I have a few, just one more second, please?
Sure.
Okay, if you don't, if you don't, if you can't contact Mr. Perrin, contact my godfather, who is the Honorable Federal Judge Theodore McMillian. His telephone number is area code 314-539...
Okay.
Call him up and ask him what is going on, because I don't know.
Thank you. All right, that closes the public comment period. What is our next item?
Motions for posting a referral.
Without objection, so ordered.
Request to be excused from council attendance. Councilmember Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on Tuesday, April 25th for city business. This meets policy.
So ordered.
Councilmember Savornich requests to be excused on Wednesday, April 12th to leave at 11:30 for personal business. This meets policy.
We'll let him do that, too.
And Mr. Ridley Thomas requests to be excused on Wednesday, April 19th to leave at noon for city business. This meets policy.
Very good, that is also approved. Next item.
The desk is clear.
Do we have any adjourning motions? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Call the roll.[1133.82]